Those balls in the air, it's not.
The man loves, he loves risk. The more that is. It's just like. It ran almost all our.
It's like, yeah, somehow this stuff like.
Mallory was on, I was waiting. Okay, the call, the meeting to order, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda of December 6, 2018.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great, and we'll move on to a mo, a motion to approve the minutes for our November 1, 2018 meeting.
Motion to approve minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Moving on to the business for the evening, I hereby open the public hearing in case on PC 2018-09. That's on my next, that was my next highlighted portion that Mallory has for me to go to.
Do you like me to review the procedure?
I would, yes, but Mallory apparently did not want you to. So, great.
Conditional use permits require a, a public hearing, and then a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council. We do have the applicant here, David Back with Back Ventures and Richard Lanning of NT Realty, who is their agent. And I'm sure they would be happy to tell you about this application. We did post a sign and publish notice as well as send notices to property owners within 185 feet.
Great, thank you. So I guess now we'll open the public hearing. Richard, come on up, thanks.
So, I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This is David Back. David represents the family, the ownership family, the site. I'm Richard Lanning with NT Realty. And I think you know, you know, since 2006, we've been in charge of the marketing of that property. We were involved in the, the demolition of the, the existing structure. You know, we had some issues with trespassers at first, so, so we put up the concrete blocks to really protect our interest from liability exposure there. So, you know, the site has been a challenge from a marketing standpoint. It, it's in the middle of the block, it's about 26,000 square feet. And, you know, the uses that we've, that we've had approaches really don't comply with anything within that district, within that overlay district. There's a prohibition against drive-throughs, you have to build a two-story building, et cetera, et cetera. So I could go through that. Our plan that we presented tonight is to redevelop that site into a 74-car paid parking lot. And at the end of the day, that's going to improve that site. I mean, it, it's going to improve the look of the area. It's going to add valuable parking to that entertainment district right there. And I, I, I really think there's some real compelling reasons why to approve this until we find a higher and better use for the site, which right now, we don't have that. So, what I'd like to do is kind of go, go down through the list here, some of the staff comments. And, and the first one is on B, whether the proposed use is consistent with the general purpose and intent of the applicable zoning district regulations and complies with requirements of zoning ordinance. During the text, the second paragraph, it says that the applicant has submitted does not comply with C2 District's design guidelines, which require a minimum three-foot wall separating parking areas from the right-of-way. Really, that site is only 115 feet deep. There's really no way to comply with that without, without diminishing the amount of parking stalls that we could get on there, which would make it economically unfeasible to develop that site for parking. So that's the reason why we didn't comply with that. It says it does not comply with the design guidelines of the Burlington Corridor Overlay District, particularly the screening and landscaping requirements that require the screening of parking areas and the use of landscape materials along unbuilt side edges and planting the trees. We have a modest amount of landscaping, but really, we, we are a retail paid parking lot. And so we need that exposure so people see that that parking is available there. And again, we just really don't have the land to support that, that, that kind of landscaping and screening. So that's the reason why we didn't, we didn't comply with that. I'm going to jump down to D, whether the proposed use is compatible with and preserves the character integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods and includes improvements, modifications, either onsite or within public right-of-ways to mitigate any adverse impacts which may result from the developments such as traffic noise, visual nuisances, and other similar adverse effects. And it says the proposed use does not include any improvements to mitigate the adverse impacts of the use, particularly visual nuisances. Well, I'd like to point out that right now, in its current state, it is a visual nuisance. And this is a big improvement over what currently exists there now. I'm going to jump to F, whether the proposed use will comply with all of the regulations of the district in which it's located. And it says the proposed use does not comply with the design, design guidelines required by C2 districts. You know, the Burlington Overlay Site Standards and Burlington Corridor Overlay Design Guidelines for landscaping and screening requirements. And we totally understand that, we're a little bit hamstrung, we don't have a very big site. In order to maximize the parking, we really have to stick with this plan. And it does have a modest amount of landscaping. I think you'll find that, that this really enhances the area and offers all of the businesses in that, what I would call entertainment district, additional needed parking. And I understand that the city is considering the development at 18th and Swift, which is going to reduce the amount of public parking spaces there. So during prime time, I really think this is going to be an asset to the community. Anything, David?
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, the area, even though you guys have it as C2, it's basically become an entertainment area. And the bars and restaurants need parking, that's like the big thing. And that's what we can provide, but it needs to make economic sense for us to do it. And we're trying to navigate, you know, really three things. Your rules and what, you know, the market wants, and then what makes sense to pay to develop. So we're trying to present a plan that will work for every, cover those bases, really. And we kind of needed a little bit of, I guess, leeway to do it. So, we're hoping that we can work with you and get it done.
Have you spoken with some of the business owners around, just to get their feedback?
Yes.
On, on it?
I think we have three of them.
Okay.
The majority owners right here.
Yeah. Thought that's why you guys might be here, just making sure. I imagine they're here in support of it.
I hope.
And there's another one. Yeah, I, I realize that there's a parking issue in the area, especially with all the entertainment venues and whatnot. To me, though, this site is really critical. It's right near the entrance to the district. And I feel like if it becomes a parking lot, it could get stuck being a parking lot for a long time before that higher and better use comes along. So, I'm kind of, a little bit, yeah, I, I, I can't say that I'm in favor of turning that site into a parking lot. It's just right at, it's so visually important to how people see the district as they enter it. So I, if it were another site within the district, maybe that would be a little bit easier to swallow, but.
So the answer is, we don't have that higher and better use. And so, it, it's going to be an improvement over what you see right now. Because it's not going to change in the near future unless we're able to do this parking lot. I, I just don't see that happening soon. It's a very small site. And until we have a bigger development in that area, and I think the backs are open to anything that makes economic sense, but right now, and since 2006, we have not been able to find that.
So it sounds to me that the plan is, even though if you put this parking lot in, you'll continue to market the land for a different use, okay?
Absolutely.
Do, do we have anybody in the, this is a po, open session, I mean, public? Is there any in the public want to say anything, or?
Services Council, how are you? Yeah. I'm Edward Collins, I'm actually the owner of Repeal 18th, which is directly to the east of the parking lot in question. I'm also the founder of Burlington Mattress Company and owner of Collins Cook Realty in Kent, in North Kansas City, Missouri, as well. I've been in this community for about eight years, and I've expanded in it because I love this community. I'm just going to be very forthright in the fact that if, and I recognize the council's opinion that they don't want to see a parking lot there. But we're talking about the entrance to an entertainment district, which won't be there if we don't get parking. Repeal 18th has been there for one year. To date, I've lost half a million dollars in that location. The biggest complaint that I get is there's no parking. We shuttered the doors about a month and a half ago for the simple reason that customers would want to come to us, but they would leave because they couldn't find a place to park their vehicles. So as far as an econ, an economic development portion of this city, if we don't provide a place for our people to park when they come here to visit these businesses, they're not going to be here. And I recognize when you're going down the street and you see a parking lot, which may sound like an eyesore, but it also is a gateway to people looking and saying, "Look at the activity that's happening right here in North Kansas City." Let's go there, let's spend our money, let's provide a tax base for the community. So, I don't want to shutter the doors again. I'll give it another shot. John Pace, who's back here as the landlord and the owner. If we're able to keep open, continue to build a tax base, we'll remain here in the city for you. So, questions on that? I implore you, it's a good move.
I don't have a question on that, but Sarah, I was wondering if I could ask you a question, just about the parking in general around the area.
So we can move on to, we just want to move on to the staff presentation, or, does it matter?
Do we have any other people from the public that want to say anything?
It was, yeah, it was just like in relation to what was.
John Pace, we own the property at 1825 and 1827.
Can you repeat that into the microphone?
I'm John Pace, we're, I'm the owner of the property at 1825 and 1827 Buchanan. And parking is just so critical there. There's just nowhere to park. You know, we welcome Chicken and Pickle, they brought so much business to that area, but on the other hand, they've taken all the parking. Cement, uh, the brewery there on the corner of 18th and Buchanan, another one, they're doing a fantastic business. Where's the people going to park? There's nowhere to park. And you got a gold mine there, the North Kansas City, you got a gold mine on revenue, but there's nowhere for your people to park. They come there, they get disgusted, they leave. And God, it would just be so great to have more parking. And I really appreciate it if you really would give that a plus. So, I thank you, and.
Thanks for your comments, appreciate it.
There's a real need in the area for this parking, and it's very similar to some of the parking lots you see in downtown Kansas City. So it's, it's not any different than that. It's going to be a real asset to this community and that little entertainment district, I promise.
Okay. Go ahead, Don, break.
I'd like to say something. You know, I understand why staff is not recommending this. You know, it is their job to read the rulebook and make sure that everything fits. It's our job as citizens and people that live here in town is to maybe look at it and say, "Hey, maybe we could bend the rules just a little bit." You know, if, you, we've all been up and down Burlington, and you see this vacant lot with great big concrete chunks laying there. It looks terrible. They were talking about the, the welcome to the city, we just spent, I don't know, $300,000 to put up that arch. And to me, anything they do there would be better than what we've got. So I, you know, it, the council, it's up to the council. But it's up our job to say, "Okay, council, we think that maybe you need to change the rules a little bit and allow this conditional use permit."
I, I, I would like to add, before we get to Sarah's portion, that, that I, I, I agree, I agree with you. I think that while it's disappointing that it's, it's come to this, at the same time, and it's hard to, we have all the business owners, or the majority of the business owners from that area here. I've been down there a lot and understand the parking issues. I've, I think, championed the, you know, the need for the city to get ahead of an overall parking issue that we have. And I do see that in potential recommendations that before this would become finalized, and so I might be getting ahead of myself, so I apologize, but this would have to come before us again, before it could happen, so we could have the opportunity to approve the design and the aesthetics of this.
Well, it is in the C2 zoning district. So in that district, before we issue a building permit, you all do a design review. They have submitted a, a pretty detailed site plan as part of this application. But, you know, because it's a conditional use permit, we can't do that final design review until the conditional use permit has been issued, and we know if there are any conditions attached to that.
Right.
So, yes, they would have to have one more round before you all for the design review because we just can't do both of those at this.
Right, I understand, okay.
In, unless as a condition, you all waived that, but staff wouldn't recommend that.
Right, I understand.
I just, I wanted to ask just a little bit more about, you know, the attempts you had to develop something on the site. I know it was, it's due to the size of requirements, not much has come, but I, I'm sort of wondering if, you know, I would say our economic conditions have been pretty favorable the last few years. If, if we weren't able to find anything in, in these conditions, I think we could be hopeful in the future, but it's likely that it will be not much of a greater chance than what we've had. Probably similar odds to what we've been facing in the last few years to get something there. So I feel like unless there's something I'm not aware about in terms of potential long-term growth with the city or something happening that would make it a different size space, I think you're always going to have those challenges. So it, long, long-term, I think we're acknowledging that it may not ever have an actual building on the site.
Are there any more questions for, for Richard or anybody, or anybody else in the public? I guess we still technically have the public hearing open.
The other good thing about it is if it's just a parking lot, if something comes along and somebody wants to build on it, it's not that difficult to change a parking lot, you know? I mean, it's not like you have to tear down a building or anything.
It, it's not, but, you know, as I mentioned early on, and Ed just brought it up again, it's a good point. If you build something on there, it has to be two stories, I understand it, and, and it has to have appropriate parking.
Yeah.
And so you're still going to have that parking issue over there. And you can clearly see from the people that are here, the business owners, that it's needed, and desperately needed.
There's one other thing in the staff comments. They've determined that there is no health or life safety issues. And I've talked to the fire department, and they say there's no problem. I mean, you know, if they get a fire, a car on fire there, they can either park on Burlington or Buchanan and, and, you know, put the fire out. There's, there's no, no issue there, I mean.
Well, I, I think where we're at now, I, I think we've kind of, you know, put a number of things together. I imagine we've had the applicant presentation, unless Richard or anybody else kind of had anything else to add. So, I think we can move on to staff presentation, and then we can always come back, because we can come back to public comments and commission questions after Sarah's having a chance to, to give her presentation.
So, as, as they stated, this is a challenging lot. It's only about six tenths of an acre, and it's a through lot. It has frontage on both Burlington and Buchanan. So a lot of our requirements in the zoning ordinance for both the C2 District, the Burlington Corridor Overlay, and our landscaping and screening section of the ordinance, I'm refer to, to screening between the property and the right-of-way. And for this lot, that means two sides, not just one, which creates some additional complications. For conditional use permits, staff is really tied to the criteria that are set out in the zoning ordinance. And Richard alluded to some of these where, you know, there are six criteria, and we're kind of half and half of criteria where they're, they're meeting the criteria established by the zoning ordinance, and they're not meeting the criteria established by the zoning ordinance for conditional use permits. So, I, I think Richard did a pretty good job of addressing the three where we have, that are problematic for this use, primarily based on the screen requirements that are established in C2 and in the Burlington Corridor Overlay District. So staff's not able to recommend approval of this. But anticipating that, that at least some of you are going to be in favor of it, we also included a list of, of conditions for you to consider if you were inclined to recommend approval. And those are listed in your staff report. Five, six, and seven are our standard conditions that we attach to any conditional use permit. So one through four would be the ones we would particularly draw to your attention. Number four gets back to your earlier question about whether this would have to come back before you, because the C2 zoning district does have that design review requirement. Number one is about the unused concrete aprons on both Burlington and along Buchanan Street. And we would ask that those be removed and the sidewalk restored along Buchanan. Number two is signage for this, shall comply with the regulations for Section 1544. That's the downtown business sign district. Three concerns landscaping, adding shade trees to the landscaping beds. And four is about sub, submission of that final site plan to you for your approval. So while staff can't recommend approval of this, we would ask that you consider these seven conditions if you are inclined to recommend approval to the city council.
Can I ask a question now about the? So I wanted to ask about the other parking in the area, and I know we, I should have better not recollection of this because we were just talking about parking at a previous meeting. But, um, there's, looking at an aerial of this site, there looks like there's a lot of lots, maybe not right adjacent to Chicken and Pickle and Repeal 18th and the businesses that were mentioned today, but like, you know, at like 18th and Clay, all those lots in there. What is the situation with those, and can they be used at any point for the clientele of the restaurants and the businesses?
So we do not require property owners to provide onsite parking in the C2 zoning district. But there clearly some of them do. And they're not, if you do provide onsite parking in this zoning district, you're not required to provide a certain amount. So in every other zoning district in the city, you're required to provide a minimum amount of parking for a development. And generally speaking, that's four and a half parking spaces per thousand square feet of development. Chicken and Pickle's is a different situation in that their parking requirement was established by the Planning Commission. And I would say that at the time we did that, I don't think any of us had any idea the amount of parking that was really going to be generated by that use. So, so yes, there is some parking in this area, and whether it's enough parking really depends on the time of day. The five to seven time period, you know, our, our parking lot at 18th and Swift is overfull. So, you know, in the morning, there's plenty of parking, but in the evening hours, probably not. So most of this parking that you see looking at this aerial is privately owned parking that's attached to either a u, the use that's on the, the lot with it. We own, the city owns a parking lot at 18th and Swift. And we have a license agreement with North Town DevCo that allows for public parking in the lot that they own that's interior to the Clay, Swift, 18th, and Armor block, only evenings and weekends. So, that's, that's the only, you know, public parking that's really in this area, immediate area.
Has there been any effort to contact? I'm just looking at the lots that are specifically like, kind of in back of River Aces and across from Cinder Block, Clay and 18th, just in that intersection. Has there been an effort to kind of talk with them about potentially using the parking in the evenings when I imagine the demand is the highest?
So.
I'm at, I mean, the business owners might have an answer to that, too, I don't know.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Our company owns the majority of the parking in the area.
Okay.
And so.
That should be easy, right?
Yeah, we, we have a temporary license agreement with the city to be able to allow them to use that.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know how lo, that's month to month. And so I don't know how long we'll continue that. If we redevelop or do, do anything different, we may terminate that agreement.
So right now, the customers of the, the, of the businesses that we've been talking about can park in those lots in the evening?
In the evenings and weekends. But bear in mind, human nature, it's like Ed Collins, his, his establishment. Depending on how old you are and what the weather's like, you're not going to park in my lot. If you want to do business with him, you want to park right across the street. You're not walking over there. The answer is that ain't going to happen in real world. I mean, you can talk about all this parking you got all you want, but the answer is, a lot of people won't go there unless they can park really close.
I'll touch on that a little bit as well. You know, having parking available doesn't mean parking is accessible. And when you're talking about bringing a clientele in, as we started with Repeal 18th, and I'm not sure if you've had the opportunity to come there.
I have.
Okay, craft cocktails, fine dining, people in cocktail dresses, Lonnie McFadden playing. We are not taking a customer base that's walking a block and a half, two blocks to get to the front door to have cocktails, especially during inclement weather. The argument can be made that there's plenty of parking over at World's Fun if we want to park people there, but they're not going to end up inside of our businesses.
I mean, that's a stretch, probably.
It is a stretch, but that same stretch applies based upon people's handicaps, their ability to walk through the streets.
Are there any handy, actual like ADA spaces that are designated on-street in that area, Sarah?
No.
Could that happen?
Yeah, we have recognized that that is an issue that we need to address, and it's contained in the parking management plan, and we intend to do that as we refresh our downtown streetscape over the next few years. And we, we have a couple of, of accessible parking spaces on the street in downtown, but I don't think any of them are in this immediate couple of blocks.
As Sarah's pointed out, you know, you guys underestimated, and we all did. I thought he was crazy when he opened Chicken and Pickle, so there's no way that's going to be sustainable. They underestimated the parking requirements and the needs, and the other business owners in and around the area are suffering because of that underestimate. We're not asking you to break the rules, we're asking you for, to bend these rules slightly to allow us to survive as businesses inside your community. You know, I know that I've got the bar, but I also have two other businesses been here for years, and I'm asking for your help here.
I have one last question. I mean, I, I imagine that if this were denied, that the lot would just remain as is. There'd be no improvements, there'd be nothing changed, it'd just continue.
You know, I can comment on that. The family's a long-term owner, they're not selling. And so the answer is, i- if, if it gets denied, it's just going to remain, you know, looking like a parking lot from Afghanistan.
Well, I, so I guess I'm a little confused. Earlier on, you said that you're going to continue to find a better use for it, but you said they're not selling, so I guess I'm confused.
Not leasing.
A leasing.
That, that's, that's what we want to achieve there, is to build the suit.
Okay.
To be able to build a building and rent it to somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they're not sellers.
Got it, okay.
I'm just thinking more about, you know, what, what would work in that space? Can somebody back up in the city's history, and since I've only been here about 10 years? What was there, what was, what's been successful there in the past before it became something that was torn down?
You know, there was an obsolete 10 or 11,000 square foot building there that, you know.
There was a grocery store a long time ago, and, let's see, other retail as well as a nightclub was demolished a number of years ago.
There was a motorcycle dealership there, too.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, prior to 2007 or '08, I mean, the building sat vacant for years. Yeah, for years.
So, because there weren't the entertainment, did you, have you, how long have you guys owned it for? So. So, okay, so you have owned it through the grocery store and the nightclub and all those things? Okay. And then after it was torn down in eight years ago or something? I don't know.
Well, you have to, you have to understand, it was, how do I put this? Safeway built it as a grocery store. Then they sold it with a lease in place to my family.
Uh huh.
So then we had Safeway there for, I don't know, decades. And then at a certain point, the community just, I guess, didn't need that grocery store. And I've heard that there was some union.
There were car dealers in there, motorcycle dealers in there, kids car there.
Builder surplus.
Yeah.
Builder surplus in there.
So how long has it been vacant for?
Oh, gosh. Yeah.
Basically, 20 years.
So you guys have owned it that whole time, right?
Well, okay. Well, you have to understand, it's, yeah, we've owned it since 53, but it was subject to a long-term lease. So Safeway assigned the lease to a company called SunWest. SunWest was renting it out to various tenants during that timeframe. SunWest was not complying with the terms of the lease, but under Missouri law, we could not bring them into court to get rid of them until the last day of the lease. Because they have theoretically until the last day of the lease to correct all defects, which of course, they didn't do. And then they were defunct.
Yeah.
So they had no money. So because they didn't maintain the building, it fell into disrepair. And then the city asked us to demolish it. So this is how we got to this point.
I guess I'm wondering, when was it demolished-ish? Like, I don't need an exact year.
Yeah, 2011, 2012.
Okay. And so a lot of these businesses came along three, four, five years ago. And so you're, what is your, are you, are you saying that you didn't, you didn't think you could do parking there earlier because there wasn't the need for parking before? And you didn't think there was any other use for the site until then?
Well.
Until now, I guess.
To answer the first question, there really wasn't a need for parking there prior to Chicken and Pickle and these businesses there.
Yeah.
Really?
This man knows. He's got it right there on the ground.
Me and my son have been there since around 2002, 2004. Okay, there's never been nothing on that lot but a dilapidated building that the city finally took, had them takedown. We've had some bad incidents there where people have parked in the lot, frequented the bar. It used to be Johnny's backyard. And before that was Pachi's. And they towed their cars. There's been fist, you know, fights because of the tow trucks. We've had altercations with his family because people parking in there. And they don't know, they just park because it's a big lot.
Yeah.
And then they brought the block, the big blocks in and they blocked it off. There's a liability of people getting hurt there or something could happen to them. They're liable.
Sure.
And it's just been an eyesore. And we desperately would love to have the parking. Everybody would love to have the parking there. And, I mean, you could drive down that street any day of the week. There's nowhere to park, nowhere. And a handicap, if you put, how many, how many could you put on that street? One, two? I mean, what's that going to do? It's not going to do any good. It's just, there's, just, there's nowhere to park. So I mean, and, I mean, if you're out and about, believe me, if you wouldn't mind, drive by that area. It's, it's just.
Sir, I live in the city and I have frequented the businesses myself. And I will admit that even though I should walk because it, I can, and it's sometimes beautiful weather even, sometimes I do drive. And I, I can't say that I've had too much, like, yes, you have to circulate, but I've lived in other cities where it's much, much harder to find parking. So, yeah. I mean, I, I'm sure you all can sense that I'm not, I'm still not in favor of this, but I, I just have to, you know, speak my mind. And I, I, you know, it's no, nothing personal. I just don't think it's a great idea.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, in order to support these businesses, it is a great idea. It is a great idea to keep these businesses in North Kansas City paying taxes, generating more and more traffic in this community. And so it would be a shame not to have these folks in business, especially if it was because of a parking issue.
Do we have any more comments from public or from commissioners? And I kind of combine these two pieces. Except not.
The only question I have, and this might be a little bit of unknown, but we have a lot of updates coming to our parking master plan, right? And then what we're going to be doing with different efforts to get people to parking, to make parking more visible, more clear where you can park. We don't know what impacts that will really have yet, right?
I haven't.
But even, even with some of the lot developments that we've had in the last year, some parking is a little better. Like, a year ago, I think parking is worse than it is probably the last few months. But some of that's also seasonal, too, but.
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to bring up what Mr. Lanning brought up is there's a very good possibility that the parking lot there at 18th and Swift will go away. And if that happens, we're going to lose a whole bunch of parking. Now, it will come back. But during construction, there'll be probably two years where there will be no, very little parking on that lot. And if that happens, that's really going to throw a strain on the parking downtown. I mean, down in that area. I just, I just feel like that it's our obligation to, as citizens, to, to, to look out for the best interest of this city. And I really feel like that converting this vacant area to a parking lot is nothing but a, a good thing that has to happen.
I think with that, unless anybody has anything else to say, I'd go ahead and propose a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Perfect. The chair will entertain a motion on this case.
I move that we recommend the approval of the CUP to the city council with the recommended conditions.
I'll second that.
May I clarify that you're, you're recommending all seven of the?
With one exception. Where it states that there must be a two and a half inch tree, my feeling is that by the time you plant a two and a half inch tree, there's going to be five or six years before it's going to give you any shade. So I would just say, you know, appropriate vegetation.
So what process do we need? Do we need to follow up a process to officially write that out as, as the mayor has wanted or?
Well, we have it recorded. So our understanding would be that you're recommending conditions one through seven with the exception, as written, with the exception of number three, which is each landscaping bed shown on the submitted plan shall include appropriate vegetation.
Okay. Okay. And if I understand, we had a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay.
So we will have this item on the city council's agenda on December 18th with a recommendation of approval with the conditions as stated in the motion.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody. Appreciate it. Move on to the, it was a long one. Might be a record for Simon on that commission. Moving on to staff report on procedure for case number, item number five on our agenda tonight.
So this item is a zoning ordinance text amendment, which is a public hearing before you. We did advertise this in the Kansas City Star. For zoning ordinance text amendments, we don't, we don't post any signs or send out letters. But I would be happy to just roll on into the staff report if you'd like.
That's fine.
We have, for the last two years, made amendments to the wireless facilities section of the zoning ordinance. So this is lucky year number three. This year, these are really minor amendments to that particular section focused mainly on bringing us into compliance with state statute amendments that were made this past year. The state legislature adopted the Uniform Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act. And so we've just got mostly minor amendments to comply with that state law. We listed all of them, you have a red line attached to the resolution in your packet. But to give you an overview, the biggest change is with respect to new replacement and modified utility poles in co-located facilities and when those are permitted without a conditional use permit in non-residential zoning districts. Otherwise, I would say this is mainly cleanup and, you know, bringing us, making minor tweaks to the requirements here. In general, under our ordinance, wireless facilities do require a conditional use permit, which is why this entire section is in that part of the zoning ordinance. But state law has resulted in loosening our ability to regulate these facilities. And so more of them would be allowed by right in the city than as conditional use permits under state law in some of these tweaks. So I would be happy to do my best to answer any questions you would have. This is a very complicated legal framework nationally and in the state. So I'd be happy to take my best stab at those.
We'll, we'll leave this up to your discretion.
We do. And all of these, we work with outside legal counsel. And these are the recommendations that they made to us.
So.
But it's looking like not many people in the public are.
Right. Exactly. So just go ahead and skip to public comment. I mean, does anybody have any questions for Sarah on this? I'll go ahead and have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Well, the chair will entertain a motion on this case.
I move that we approve whatever it was.
A wireless communication zoning text amendment.
Thank you.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Perfect.
Well, I appreciate.
That was a way, that was a lot easier than the first one.
I appreciate you not testing my, my ability to answer questions about this. This one will also be on the council's December 18th agenda for final approval with some additional, it goes hand in hand with some additional amendments to Chapter 12 concerning right-of-way. So you'll see a couple of amendments on the 18th.
Great. So moving on to a discussion on the zoning ordinance update.
Chris has been waiting patiently in the desk.
Wondered who that was.
I thought he might hear, might be here to talk about the, the wireless.
Here's just a minute. Which one of these is?
Times have changed.
Good evening, Commissioner. Chris Brewster with Gould Evans here to give an update on the zoning ordinance project. We're at, I'll walk through some of the, it hasn't changed all that much, actually, in reality. I find this picture amazing every time we use it. Basically, this is a view of our overall scope of services. Where we're at right now is here, initial draft. We've got a number of things going on with the initial draft that I'm here to update you on. So we're tracking fairly well. We might need to make up a little bit of ground over the next month or two to stay on target for our March and April to have a final draft in the adoption process. But we're hoping to make some headway with discussions such as this to see if we're on target or not. What led us to this date are the items over there on the, on, on the left, which were part of our initial three phases. So we're basing all of this off Plan Conformance Report, the draft framework that I think is the last thing you all saw where we started to reorganize your development code. A couple of issues from those phases that are still lingering that will help support our work that's going on here in the initial and final draft is we have the ability to dive into some of the more critical issues or do some case studies on topics a little bit more in-depth for things that we aren't certain on. So we want to keep that in mind. And then scheduling a public open house when we feel it's ready to kind of view the concepts to get, to get a much broader input from community stakeholders. So our discussion topics tonight are, I'm going to go through, what, the way we've approached this was we were going to update the entire citywide zoning ordinance, the bigger framework. But your master plan is very strong on the idea that for downtown and then surrounding areas, the downtown transition area to explore form-based code ideas. So we're trying to mesh those two concepts into one document. And so we've been kind of looking at them separately, but in our initial draft, we do feel they're, they're coming together. So I'm going to walk through some of the concepts that we have in the citywide initial draft ordinance, and then circle back and hit some of the form-based code topics that we, that we're talking about as well. This is a, this will, this is the way we have the, the ordinance, the initial draft structured. So we've made a lot of headway in kind of streamlining the code and really getting it organized under these main sections. And this all comes from the draft framework that you saw last time. And I'll walk through each of these sections on what's new, what's not new, and just to give you an introduction to it. Chapter 1704, all the general provisions will be there, all the kind of legal, technical items, much like your current 1704 is. We did see the ability to incorporate the current non-conformance section with some cleanup items and simplification. So that seemed to be a logical fit for that. And then there were some administration and enforcement items that were in a different section that we felt belonged here as well. So when we complete that, that'll be, 1704 will be kind of all the, the operating system for the ordinance, all the things that no one wants to read and you only read them if you need to. And so we, we tried to get all of those items there. And stop me if you have any questions on any of this as I walk through. The next section was applications and procedures. And so those are currently found in Section 1796. And they're really written towards zoning amendments. And then you have other procedures sprinkled throughout the code. And so we're going to reorganize them all here under, the, the main reorganization is we, the procedures that are general to every application are right up front. And then there's a table that supports that. So it's a quick, easy reference for what do I have to go through? What are the steps? Who's going to review it? What are my requirements? And then each additional procedure has a specific section that just walks through its applicability, its review criteria, how you all will review it and, and subject to what standards, and then what's the effect of the decision. Because those are the main differences. So that enables us to streamline a lot of the procedures very easily. And then we rolled in procedures that were found in other sections. So this, this conditional use permit procedures in 1784 will be here. The PUD process will be rolled in here under a new approach. And then there's some, a lot of permit and fee sections that we want to try to get here as well, to the extent we need them. On our approach to the PUDs, one of the things we're trying to do is really to convert that to a true planned district where there's some scale of planning that needs to go on. And so putting some more refinement to the, to the types of plans, so an illustrative concept plan. So these will be things that if you're varying from the standards, what are you using to justify and support it? So these three main types of plans are kind of meshing with what we're, we're talking about with the downtown area as well. So that's a little bit different than the way it's been done. But it's also enabling us to kind of make that section read a little easier and basing it off the new standards we're introducing in, in other sections. So this is an example of the table that's right up front on all the procedures. So all of this is supported by that text section. But it's, again, it's a quick, easy reference for who's going to review it, when, are they going to be recommending body or decision-making body? Is it a public hearing or just a general public meeting? And what type of notice do I need to send out? So we'll tweak this as we tweak the procedures, but this is at least the initial look at the table. The next section, 1712, is zoning districts and uses. One thing that's different in what? One thing that's different and what really enabled us to compress the ordinance was we're trying to, instead of having each district be its own chapter, where there's a lot of repetition, we're putting all of the establishment of the zoning districts and the uses that are allowed in one section. So it will all be here. If you want to know about the zoning district and the uses that are allowed, you go to 1712, and it'll have everything for every district there. We're updating the intent statements for each of the zoning districts to get them to better align with the master plan, so we're using some of those character areas in that framework to tweak them, particularly the R4, which we've talked about. R4 and R5 were very comparable multifamily districts, and so we're targeting the R4 one, which is one of the lesser-used zoning districts right now, to be the one where you have a lot of different housing options in that more walkable neighborhood format. And then repurposing the C1, which is very similar to C2 and C3 in terms of uses, but particularly C3 in terms of development standards, repurposing that to be much more neighborhood scale, small scale, like the title of the district implies. Also, it's a very little-used district, and we even talked about, do we even need it at all? Because I think there's only one place where it's used, and I think it was, there it was used not for anything, it was just a certain standard they wanted to pick up. So we want to repurpose that district to make sure it's geared towards more small-scale commercial. And then the last is to get a consolidated use table. We're going, we're basing, it's based, it is based off of all the current, we did a real in-depth comparison of all the places' uses were listed in the ordinance, and as you all know, probably there's conflicts among how something's called in one zoning district versus another. So we consolidated it all in one and then reconciled some of those conflicts. We also saw the ability to generalize a lot of the uses when there was a distinction being made that, but it didn't treat the use any differently. We compressed that into one single use, and then we did make some more, we did distinguish some uses that weren't mainly based on the scale intensity. So for example, retail, we put some different categories of retail, again, that would tie to that, which scale and which district does it belong in. So here's an excerpt of that use table. So this is, right now, it goes on for a little over three pages in the ordinance, but this, that's, again, that's how we were able to compress all of the zoning districts into this Section 1712 with regard to the uses and the districts themselves. The next chapter, building and development standards. Here, we're establishing all of the parameters for how you build. So 1712 was about districts and uses, this is about how you build. So all the development standards are here. We took all, again, they were all in separate chapters, each to their own zoning district, and we compressed them all to a, into a table. The newest thing here is going towards a more of a building-type approach, and I'll walk through that in a little bit of detail to give you a better feel for it. But that was mainly to deal with our approach to the R4 district and then our approach to how we're going to address, how do you build in walkable formats that your plan calls for? And then this article also includes design standards, both residential design, which we're still discussing where and how should they apply. We want them for the new R4 district because they make everything come together. The question will be, can we broaden those to apply to other areas, mainly the R1B, which is the smaller lot areas in the avenues, because the standards are geared towards maintaining a small scale and maintaining a human scale as development occurs, and so are those things that could apply to that district as well. And then the commercial design standards, we have a strategy that those are going to be based on the relation of the building to the street. So the closer to the street, the more refined it needs to be, the further back, the more open it can be. And then the districts and streets that require setbacks will determine how specific the design standards get. And we'll walk through that with regard to the downtown area, because I think it'll become more clear, that strategy. So here is an example of the, all of the residential development standards for all districts, and again, they're filtered by building type, but the ones highlighted in red are all your current standards, basically. So nothing's being lost, it's all being recaptured and carried over, so everything you could do in those districts, you will still be able to do. The new things that we are adding are what's been termed that missing middle housings, or all those higher-density but smaller lot building types. And then you can kind of see those are really only going to affect that new R4 zoning district for new options and new opportunities on the residential side. When we talk about those options, this is sort of a strategy we use, that when you're trying to get a mix of density, mix of housing types, and keep them in a neighborhood feel, it's based off of this idea of if the scale of the building types is all similar, we can arrange them in a lot of different ways, provided they have, they share a common relationship to the street, and that's what we're calling the frontage types. So within all of these different patterns and assemblies, you can get a lot of interesting things, a lot of unique projects, and a lot of diversity within a neighborhood, maybe within a block even, and it all kind of comes together. So for that R4 district, we're really talking about these types over here, you know, the smaller lot, single-family and detached houses, but then also the multi-unit buildings and how they fit in. And then the larger-scale ones, that mid-rise apartment or even mixed-use, being strategic about where they would be allowed, the transition area to downtown particularly, and then in a planned format, a lot of different areas where it could go as well. So here's some examples and prototypes of those different types, so you get a better feel of what we're looking at, and some of them from your own community, as you can see. And this strategy really is Northgate. I mean, that's how Northgate came together, so we're trying to break apart the parts of Northgate and build them into that R4 district so that more projects like this can happen either on a lot-by-lot basis or on a larger-scale redevelopment basis. On the commercial development standards, again, similar approach. We took all of your current standards that were by district and pinned them to a building type. So all the ones in red would basically be the ones that maintain everything you can do in your current zoning districts you can do now. The changes would involve adding these newer types that are actually geared towards, they have a, instead of minimums, they have maximums. So this is, these are the ones that would be geared towards smaller scale and targeted towards that CO and C1 to make sure those are neighborhood-scale uses. And then the other tweak we have here, based on the master plan, is that to say, when we are planning for a walkable context, we know that these development standards, particularly on the front setback, aren't going to work for that. They're all requiring the building to be set back rather than address the street. So we have a strategy of how we can vary that in certain contexts to allow more walkable development patterns. And again, this is applying mainly outside of the urban areas, which we're going to deal with, we're going to deal with that issue with more form-based code strategies. So if there's any areas beyond that that would want, that would request development in walkable formats, you kind of handled the biggest one with the redevelopment project, but we're envisioning that tools like this could help build off of that. Moving on through the different sections, open space and landscape design is next. We reorganized and simplified your current section, 1778, and we basically broke out all the planting requirements based on the components of the site. So streetscape, frontage, foundation, parking, buffers where they're required, and they wouldn't be required everywhere, and open space, design space, not just that leftover space where it would be required. And it's not required everywhere either. But that organization makes it a little easier to figure out, what do we want our landscape to do? Are we trying to screen and separate? Are we trying to design it to provide more aesthetic and usable space? Are we trying to design it to engage the street? So the frontage and streetscape components do that. And giving credit for where and when you apply those things, and sometimes it can have dual functions as well. So we felt it was a better way to organize your current landscape standards. Next chapter, access and parking. Again, it's just mainly a reorganization and simplification of your current standards, getting more things into tables, getting more topics grouped in a better way. The design, we did put in design standards for the parking areas themselves, so again, landscape and buffers and setbacks, based on a kind of a sliding scale of both the size of the parking lot, how big is it, and where it is in relation to the streetscape. So what we don't want to do is inadvertently make parking lots bigger than they need to be. So one of the strategies is to say, well, if it's a 20-car parking lot, perhaps it doesn't need a bunch of landscape that's only going to serve to expand the footprint of that parking lot. Maybe what we'll only need to do is just landscape the perimeter more good. Yet if, or if it's a parking lot in the back, similarly, maybe we don't need a lot of landscape because they serve the objective of making the parking less prominent and the building and the site in relation to the street more prominent, so giving them a break on landscape there. Whereas the bigger it gets and the more prominent it is in the front, the more the landscape requirement would go up. So that's one of the strategies that's in there. And then overall, just improving flexibility on getting to that right parking count, which is not really an attainable thing anyway. So putting as much flexibility in there so that good solutions and good strategies to parking can be found, so on-street credits, bicycle credits, and shared parking allowances. You currently have that, but adding a little more specificity to that. We're still working through some of those ideas with staff as well. So that's really it, that, those sections, and then the last one that's in there is a placeholder, those other items where things like the cellular communication ordinance that we discussed earlier, those topic-specific things are going to be grouped in that last chapter that's reserved for other items. So we'll have a series of sections that catch all those types of topics that are just issue-specific ordinances and things addressing that, where we don't see a lot of changes or where it's an issue that's a citywide item that we address differently than through the zoning districts. Those will be housed there. I'm going to move into the urban areas and the form-based code approaches unless there's any questions on any of these topics, and maybe some more will come up as I walk through that, because you'll start to see that some of these things are repeated in this next I think when we last left you with the concept for this, we talked about doing three different regulating maps, a street-type map, a use map, and then a building height map. We had a session with staff where we walked through some of these issues, and what we really came up with is what we think we need is just a form map that's based on streets, but it's not really mapping the streets. Where we address these five main topics, where's the front building line? What entrance feature requirements are going to be there? What's the building transparency? And what standards do we have on limiting blank walls? And then where and how can the parking relate to the street based on where you're situated within the urban areas? And then leave the uses themselves to be based on whatever zoning district you're in. These, all of these topics, by the way, are things that we've sort of, we find them in a lot of development codes, but when we talk about your C2 and the C2 design guidelines, they pretty much mirror a lot of these ideas anyway, so we think this can be a replacement for that. It can also be a replacement for the dreaded Burlington Corridor overlay district, because it addresses a lot of these topics as well. So we think this is a pretty good strategy that will work. So our refined map looks a little bit like this right now. And again, we want to spend some time going block by block and working through it, but what we basically did was we came up with five form and frontage types. The walkable downtown, so think Armour Road and offshoots of that, where you want the highest degree of pedestrian amenity and pedestrian-friendly designs, both in the streetscape and the building. Walkable transition, a lot of places we call these B-streets, the kind of the streets that make the place vibrant. You know, they're still very walkable, but they may not have to meet the highest standards, but they do present good urban form and good relationship to the streetscape. Service street, but still walkable, so this is mainly, we start to get into the industrial areas or on busy corridors. So again, we're kind of ratcheting down the degree of design details that are there, but it's still, it's still a well-connected, and it's an extension of a lot of your walkable transition streets. And then the service warehouse street, which those are kind of the back streets, the industrial areas, things where we don't necessarily care about street-front buildings, we don't care about screening quite as much, and those types of things. And then the last being the boulevard gateway, the ones that's supposed to address the Burlington Corridor plan in a better way than the overlay district does. And just to give you, oh, the other thing that we talked about last time, and I think it was receptive to this group as well as the stakeholders, is we really wanted to map this area up here as this is the ideal spot for a residential redevelopment. We probably won't do that with this effort, but we wanted to build that concept in where we've got a few different versions of where we scaled this off and drew a different block structure within these larger lots. And this would be an ideal spot for a lot greater-density, walkable residential development. It would pretty much reinforce the policy of the master plan that we want to keep these things closer to downtown, and we want to maintain industrial areas further out. So hitting that market in a more concentrated area to us seemed like a good strategy. Yeah, you might be losing a few frontages and sites that are industrial use now, but the idea is, let's put all, let's target all of that to that area. It's a future step, we think, but it's one we wanted to build into the code as an option that easily fits within here. And so really, the R4 standards that we talked about earlier would be ideal for this area, and you could get a lot of critical mass that would support further businesses in and around downtown and down Swift as well. The standards that would go along with each of those form and frontage types, basically what we address is building placement, so, and this goes back to that idea, in your current zoning districts, they're all 25-foot setbacks. So now here, obviously, other than C2, here we would be saying, most of them are, we're saying, not only do you, we not want you to be setback, but you'd be zero to 10 feet from the street in most cases. On other blocks, like that service warehouse one, not necessarily so. And then maybe a little more leniency on the Burlington Corridor for certain areas as well. But that's our first item, where does the building go? Second item is primary entrance feature. How many, how frequently? Higher degree on the downtown walkable, lesser degree to not even a requirement necessarily when we get to the service street. So each of those streets are kind of grading down the pedestrian scale of it as you get further and further from the downtown core. Similar idea with facade transparency. 60% to 90% is the, kind of the target of ground-floor transparency, of being windows that you can see in that relates the building to the outside for highly pedestrian-oriented areas, just going down lesser and lesser as we get down each of those street types. And then the last one, amassing and modulation standards. So how do we limit blank walls, basically, through either amassing, architecture, doors and windows, things like that, to limit the blank walls? Higher standard on the downtown walkable streets and lesser standards as you go through. So using that approach, we were able to get most of the development standards that we would care about in a, for this whole area in a single table like this. All of them actually have subsections that relate how you would interpret it, but you can basically just see, relate your kind of menu item to the map of, you know, what do we care about where? Again, we, as an initial draft, we're not sure we have all of these 100% right, but we think we're pretty close. And in working with staff, we thought this strategy was a pretty simple way to break things down and a way to address all the different things that are going on within this area, from downtown to the Burlington Corridor, to the industrial transition area The standards in that table were all sort of mined from existing buildings. We went through, toured the area and looked at a lot of the different conditions and different strategies. So all of these pictures aren't necessarily in each of those areas, and all of these pictures don't necessarily meet those, the standards in that previous table to a T, but they're pretty close. And these, this is where we took our concepts and ideas from, and you just can just, if you just filter through these images, you can kind of see the higher degree of human scale pedestrian design and to the lower degree. And so then it simply becomes, if we've got the standards right, it simply becomes a matter of, is the map right? And we can literally go block by block and determine which street should get which treatment. With that, our next steps are to continue with reviewing comment period on the initial draft, get it into more hands. I know, I don't think you guys have even seen it yet. We're working with staff and refining some things, so expect to see that soon. We want to integrate that approach that I just went through for the urban areas with the overall citywide ordinance, so we aren't repeating things. And so we see a lot of opportunity to overlap those and really get the development code streamlined. As we review that initial draft, we want to be looking for issues that need a... As we review that initial draft, we want to be looking for issues that need a deeper, longer discussion and start to reach out to other stakeholders, whomever those may be. I know staff had a series of things that they've been wrestling with that will probably do that. And then from that, we want to build that into the, the final draft that we, that kind of becomes our formal recommendation of we, we feel this is an adoptable product and go through the similar review and comment from there, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, but that's where we're at right now.
And just one question, if you can go back to the layout with the different colors on the streets.
Yes.
Was there any thought or maybe something to consider as you're, as you're working on this? On, you know, 16th being a service or warehouse level, I would have expected possibly that would be considered maybe at the walkable level just because of what's coming in the, the One North Development, there could be people staying at the apartments, people at those hotels who don't have car who are going to need to walk, you know, possibly to some of the amenities and things, businesses that are in, you know, off of 18th and such, so that, I don't know. I know we kind of designated, we've got the greenway with the bicycle, but I don't know if long-term we might be thinking about that corridor, 16th Street possibly being at maybe a higher level on the chart.
Yeah, and then, and I think we were probably going to get that exact same comment from staff, because we, what we, the reason we flip-flopped on both of those, and when we talked about it, we did, we did, it's, it's, that's the truck route as well. And so that was our original thought was, well, that's always been the, to be preserved as the truck route in and out. And, and Sarah informed me that, well, with the bike lane going there, we actually feel it can be all of those things. And so I would see that one probably flipping to one that will be blue as well. The, the reason we have 14th blue is that's the one that actually exhibits those qualities the most right now. So its, its existing conditions are really quite good, especially down there near.
Jasper and Knox.
Right. It's, it's really intact and, and got high quality. Even though it's an industrial area, it has a great urban form, and so we're kind of more of protecting it more so than repeating. So I could see a, a way for both of those to probably be that blue color, we'll have to think through. That'll relate to how stringent or correct we have those standards, so we're going to want to test those to make sure they'll work, but yeah, it's a very good point.
The, the challenge with 16th is that we have a lot of buildings there that, that face the side, the other streets. So you have a lot of sides of buildings that are right up on, on 16th, because, you know, buildings are addressing Gentry or they're addressing Swift, they're not addressing 16th Avenue. And so, you know, that's just, that historic pattern has been that buildings aren't, aren't facing 16th. And the, the lots that do face 16th have the, the larger setbacks. So it's, it is interesting when you look at 14th. 14th is much, it's a much nicer street in terms of how the buildings address 14th than 16th is. And so that's why it's, it's shown as Service Warehouse, because we don't have that existing pattern to work with in, in the near term. And because it's the truck route, so then it, it makes sense for it to kind of continue that, that warehouse pattern.
So when we're, well, ah, sorry, so when will our next update be from you on?
I think our next big milestone on this is to have a meeting with stakeholders in the community to kind of present this and get some feedback. And just be able to say, these are the major changes that we're considering. Because so far, the, the work that Chris has been doing has been pretty technical to figure out how we want to marry all of this. That's our, our next big milestone. But before we did that, we wanted to show this to you all and to say, is there anything in here where you think, oh no, this is, this is moving in the wrong direction and we don't want to show it to the community? And I know we're giving you the high-level overview, so this is also, is there anything in here where you're, you're kind of feeling a little hesitant and you want to be able to really read through it and digest it before we get there? Because we're at the point to be able to provide you with some rough drafts that you could review and look at. And we're happy to give you a rough draft now, it's just, we're not, we would ask you not to circulate it much further, because we're still working on it.
Well, I, I can tell you that I, I believe that there's going to be a lot of questions around the proposed neighborhood near downtown. You know, if there's any more beyond that, more concrete information, other than, hey, what do you think about our neighborhood here? I think the, I think the public would be interested to kind of know more about that.
And I think the thing to keep in mind is that we're, we're trying to build this so that if this happens in the future, we can handle that kind of development in the future. But this is, this is a legal document that establishes our standards for development.
Sure.
So we don't have anything to say about this.
Right.
We have things to say about this.
Got it.
So we're, we're trying to set ourselves up for this if it were to happen in the future, but, you know.
Right, we have no control, right, I understand. Right, I understand. I'm just going to tell you, zoning ordinance or no, I mean, if we go to the public for information, they say, oh wow, neighborhood there, that's cool. I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot of questions about it, that's just a more general comment.
I, I'd be interested in seeing a rough draft, just, just because this is the first information I've seen from the ordinance update for a while. But I don't see any glaring concerns about taking it.
Can he? I, I don't, I don't buy it, I'm just saying, for official rules and procedures.
If you say he can.
I, I would say this, as the, the largest stakeholder, couple hundred million plus worth of capital invested in this community, that we are the biggest stakeholder in that residential area and the industrial area. And so we just want to make sure that we manage expectations on the residential. I mean, we're not going anywhere, we're not selling. And at some point, we may develop that as, you know, residential development. We've talked about that, we've done some planning with regard to that, but I just want to manage expectations of the general public, because they're not stakeholders in that ground.
Yeah, we're showing you this to show you how we could address a larger-scale redevelopment of this area if it were to happen with this kind of regulatory scheme. This is not, I'm not sure this is something we would want to show to the public.
Okay, that's, that, and that's kind of where I was going with that, I was just, yeah.
You know, and I'm a little concerned about the industrial areas, you know, you talked about 16th Avenue. We own the majority of the industrial product along 16th Avenue. That's not going anywhere in the near future, so we don't want to hamper the ability of ingress and egress for our tenants and their customers and vendors, so. We just want to manage expectations with respect to that too.
Okay.
But, you know, generally, I, Chris has done a great job with this, and so has staff. But I would like to, to look at that document in detail.
Great, thank you for clarification. Anything else or any other questions or comments? Thank you for your time tonight, and a little later than usual, so we appreciate your, your time. I guess we can move on to the discussion, the drive-through signage.
I will say, just on this, our next step then will be to provide you with a rough draft for you to look at and to ask us questions or make comments. We would ask that you not circulate it widely so that we can have a chance to get your feedback. And we'll be planning for a January, February community meeting, so that we can talk to people before we have that final review draft.
We also have, with the framework, we went through the current ordinance section by section, and so we've mapped out where the, where it is new compared to where it was before, so you'll be able to compare this table of contents to where it is in the current code, so you could flip back and forth if you have a certain issue you're concerned about. So you don't have to read the whole thing, basically, that, we'll provide that document as well, so it'll be a little easier to navigate.
Yeah, so we are preserving a lot of our current standards in, in various ways. So it's going to look very different. Because Chris has done a lot of reorganization to make it easier for, for people to find standards or to find, you know, the review process. So there are things that are going to look really different, but won't actually be different requirements. So just keep that in mind too, as you look at it.
Great, thank you very much. So you're going to move on to the drive-through signage discussion?
Drive-through signs.
I'm excited.
Me too. So we did send you all a memo after we sent out the packet. We, you know, drive-throughs are, fast food in general, very interesting, because it is an industry segment that iterates quite a lot. And they, they are constantly looking for ways to streamline their operations. Particularly because a lot of these restaurants, a significant percentage of their business goes through the drive-through. So it's definitely one of those market segments where the regulations do not keep up with the changes that the, the industry is making. And they learn things in other parts of the country, and then, you know, the standards, you know, ripple through the franchise. And so we're, we're trying to keep up. For us in particular, this is with respect to drive-throughs and their signs. The sign ordinance does not, is not part of the zoning ordinance and doesn't go through you all, but we want to use you as a focus group tonight to get some feedback as we think about it. There are four main challenges that we're facing, which we laid out here. Drive-through restaurants want more menus in front of people as they go through the drive-through. So there's a, a menu board sign, we refer to them as reader boards in our ordinance, at the drive-through ordering location, where, you know, you're talking to the person and the speaker. They would, they're all requesting to put up pre-order menu boards, so that as you are waiting to get up to that speaker, you're looking at the menu and deciding what you'd like. Our ordinance right now only allows them to put up one sign per service location. And that's, you know, been a point of frustration for a lot of our franchisees. We have a cumulative 50-square-foot area maximum, so that doesn't give a lot of flexibility for corporate sign design. It also, you know, they're all going to double drive-through designs, it doesn't give a lot of flexibility to allocate that space between multiple locations. We have a 30-foot setback requirement for drive-through signs. That can be a challenge on narrow or irregularly shaped lots. The main reason that we are bringing this up with you right now is Burger King. And as Burger King looks at their new lot, it's a very narrow lot, there's no way for them to meet this standard. So we're looking at either making an amendment to the sign ordinance to facilitate their development or taking them to the BZA for a variance. Most of the time when people ask us about a variance and it's an undeveloped site, we say there is no way you're going to get a variance. And this is one case where we're going to, i- if we have to, we'll make a, a recommendation for a variance on an undeveloped site because we just don't see any way that they can meet that standard. Even if they were to turn that building, because it's a very narrow lot. And then finally, digital signage. This is not really specific to, to drive-throughs, but we do have, our, our ordinance, the last time we addressed digital signs was a significant period of time ago, when digital signs were different, they were more expensive. We were, you know, our, we have, we limit digital signs to one sign per lot, it doesn't matter what kind of sign it is, there will only be one. And no more than 25% of the sign area. Because at the time we did that, we probably, why would anybody do a completely digital sign? It would have been horrendously expensive. Well, now it's cheaper and it's easier to do, so people are asking us about doing a 100% digital reader board sign, so that they can update it whenever they'd like and it's less expensive for them to do that. So we would not allow anybody to put up a 100% digital sign. If you did one reader board sign, that would be your one sign for your lot, you couldn't do the, you know, so it's, our, our regulations are just not keeping pace with what people are asking us to do, and what they're asking us to do doesn't seem so terrible to us. So those are the four questions. Should we allow people to put up additional menu board signs for their drive-through? Should we increase the square footage? Should we calculate that cumulatively the way we do now, or should there just be a maximum sign area per sign? Should we reduce the setback requirements? And should we relax the limits on digital signs? And that's what we need feedback on. What do you think?
Well, I, I know when I, when I read this, was reading through this earlier today, I was thinking and then came across it in point number two, the second half of that being, it seemed to make sense to me that maybe calculating, you know, on a per-sign basis would make some sense to kind of avoid, instead of doing this one big cumulative number, just having regulated maybe the number of signs and then the size of each sign that folks can put up. And I think just at a higher level, I think that, I mean, I think it makes sense to relax limits on digital signs, because, you know, the way the world's going is digital. So I think that makes some sense to me.
What was the idea behind the cumulative?
The idea was that we would give people flexibility to decide, you know, you know, maybe one sign is bigger and one sign is smaller. And I, I think that was the idea behind, behind the cumulative. It also started out as a, when, when our ordinance, you know, when we came up with that 50 square feet, I don't think anybody had double drive-throughs. So it was really kind of, it started out as one sign and it's no more than 50. And then we didn't want to just have a huge proliferation of, of signs, so it was, well, it's still 50, but now you can have one sign per location. So it made sense at the time, but now it's not as workable.
You know, it wasn't that long ago that nobody thought we'd have scooters running up and down the street. But it's happening and it's coming. New technology is, is running away with itself. And I really believe about the only thing we can do is try to catch up with it, you know, I mean, this stuff is coming. And so get out in front of it.
Right, and it, Mallory may poke her head up here from our, our back room in a minute, because she's been the one who's primarily talked to people. But the digital signs are a little bit smaller than the existing menu boards, but they also need them to be a little bit closer to you, so they're easier to read. So it's, you know, it's a little bit of a different setup than the existing menu boards, but I mean, under our existing ordinance, we just don't allow this at all.
What about neighboring communities, have you looked at how they treat us?
It's really hard to compare, because people treat signs so differently. There are a lot of communities where every sign is approved by the planning commission or by city council as part of a master sign package. Our, our ordinance is set up so that people don't have to come to you for signs, so we have a much more detailed sign ordinance, because the idea being, we want to just issue permits so that people can get a sign permit quickly and.
How does Sonic get away with, they've got.
That is a good question that I cannot answer. And I'll be honest, working through this, I hope that Sonic never does anything new and different, because we'll have to, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's their whole business model, right?
Yeah. I don't know, I really, and that's been there so long, I'm not sure what version of the ordinance would have, would have addressed them at that time. We have not tried to go back and answer that question.
Yeah. Well, I know too, that when McDonald's came in down here, their signs were not in compliance. And the council finally had to give them a variance or whatever it was to, to get them, get them legal. But, and really, I, I don't see that it was any big problem. I mean, I think they had too many signs or too, too many square feet and, and really, it's no big deal.
So right now, you got, you, the city allows one sign per drive-through, like
Right.
place where one can order food, basically.
Yes.
And most places want two per.
They really want two per, yes.
Yeah, I, I can't say that I have any issues with this, I think that, I mean, if it makes it easier for them to do business, it doesn't seem like it's, I guess the only issue would be if there was like a neighboring property owner that would somehow be disturbed by this, but it seems like the signs are, if anything, going to be closer in to where the business is occurring on the property, not like encroaching on a setback or anything like that, so.
I feel like the, the point you made earlier is noteworthy, that if you allow someone to go all digital, I think it allows it probably to be a smaller sign in many cases, it would mean less of a ISO, I guess, you know, if you're going to have signs, smaller ones, you can do more with the real estate if it's digital.
You get all your questions answered.
Well, I will say, what I'm hearing from you is that you are not concerned about us making changes to this, that you wouldn't be worried about adding additional signs or calculating the sign area per sign instead of cumulatively. Although, would you be worried about, you know, the sign, you know, if we had two signs per location, would you, how concerned are you about their overall size individually?
Well, I think the, the ordinance you have, that no, none can be higher than seven feet, that still seems like a, a good thing. I think there needs to be some sort of general maximums that we want to keep everybody working inside. I think, I think that's a good thing to keep.
But you would, you would still set a limit on the size of each sign, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as that was reasonable.
Okay. And that we should, you, you're open to relaxing the limits on digital signs to, to facilitate this? And the setback requirement, does that seem reasonable to adjust that?
It sounds like at the Burger King, I mean, the best they could do is 21 feet, so we'd be moving from 30 feet as a standard to 21 feet as a standard potential.
Um, you know, we might...
There has to be some setback requirement, right?
Yeah, we would probably look at, we do have other drive-throughs that are, are pretty close to the property line, so we'd probably do some investigation about, you know, where everybody else is, and see, you know, what seems reasonable for a citywide standard. Twenty, you know, that might end up being 20 feet, but we would want to just do a little bit more before we put something before council. The only one that I know of that currently is where that 30 feet is, doesn't happen, is Scooters, they have a variance, because that building is so far up in the lot, that one of their, one of their drive-through signs is like within seven feet, I think, of the property line, but they're, you know, kind of in a different situation.
Man, I don't know if this gets more complicated than you want it to get, but in these cases, does it make sense coming up with some sort of a standard where, you know, in these narrow lot situations that, you know, or it needs to be 30 feet or, you know, something in relation to the, how close it is to the building itself? Does that make sense? So, so say if you only have, you know, 15 feet to the end of the property line, as long as it's within, you know, the 50% size, it's closest to the building, I think, I don't know if that's a right number, but does that kind of make sense? I mean, it may get more into the weeds or more complicated than you would want it to be, but, so it's, so it's close, so, so...
Yeah. You know, I don't, we'll have to think about that. I, I'm not sure. Now, we do, in the ordinance, if you're, if the reader board sign is mounted to your building, then that setback doesn't apply.
Right.
So it might be that we need to think about, you know, what's the setback for, for the buildings, and maybe that's what, you know, we, we want to try to match that. But we'll, we'll think about that.
I think you could tie it to the width of the lot. Like, if the lot is, like, if you determine that, like, see what is reasonable for 30 foot, 30-foot setback, like, what width lot would 30 feet be totally fine with? And then if it's less than that, then, then have like a different setback for, depending on the width of the lot. I think that would be...
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Yeah, I, just because you don't want people just unnecessarily move, like, encroaching on a street or something when they don't need to.
Well, this is, is helpful feedback for us. We'll be working on, on considering amendments that will end up going before the, the city council sometime in the near future. But we appreciate your thoughts about it, and if you have any other suggestions or ideas or concerns, please let us know.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm seeing no members of the public left this evening. I think we'll move on to comments from staff.
We don't have any further comments. Your next scheduled meeting would be January 3rd. At this point, we don't know of any cases that would be coming before you. There, there's one thing kind of floating out there that we don't know, we'd get an application by January. Your first meeting of the calendar year is always a meeting where you elect your officers for the next year, so whether that's January or February or March, we'll see, but that's your next scheduled meeting, and that would be something that will be coming up at your next meeting.
Okay. Comments from commissioners? I do have one quick, quick comment. I'm, I'm curious, going back to the, the first item that we had today, has the property owner or the city ever tried to work, approach one another or work together to come up with any sort of incentives or, or anything to try and match them with a tenant or, or anything like that? I'm just curious.
Well, our economic development incentive policy applies citywide, kind of establishes criteria for when incentives are available. And that's something that I think we have worked on pretty publicly over the last few years, so I, I think it's generally well-known, particularly to, to Richard, since they're our largest property owner. We don't play a, a real hands-on matchmaking role between property owners and tenants. We do, when people call us, try to make, and, and say, hey, I'm looking for X. We try to let them know what's available and give them information. As Richard said, that lot is very challenging because of its size and shape and the street constraints. So, you know, most of the time when people, you know, come to us and say, hey, I'm looking for this, they're looking for an existing building, or they're looking for much larger lots. When people call us about land, they're looking for several acres, they're not looking for six tenths of an acre.
And I can comment. So, yes, I'm aware of all types of different economic development incentives, have been for a long, long time. And the situation just has never presented itself that makes sense for that lot, for, for any user that we've been talking to or trying to, more trying to recruit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so...
I was just curious, yeah.
It's been, it's been a real challenge for that, that size of lot.
Yeah, and even, even people who are interested in smaller lots, usually they want at least an acre.
Mm-hmm.
The, the one thing I don't know whether you folks understand, but see, you know, the Ellis family, which is Seberg-Muffler, is clear on the north end, and they're also clear on the south end of that lot. And then the backs on the middle of it. And both of them have been there for years. And one wants to buy out the other one, and the other one wants to buy out the other one, and neither one of them are going to sell. And so it's...
Yeah, that, that would make it a more developable area, if you combine all of that from Armour to 18th Avenue. But short of that, it's, it's going to be tough. And, and really, I guess I'll just close with this, but you've heard the old saying, you need to dance with the one who brought you the party. Well, everybody behind me during that presentation, those are the ones that really have brought North Kansas City to the party. And without those businesses, it's not really going to be that viable of an entertainment district. So if they're screaming for parking, we really need to try to accommodate them. And the backs need to put their property in use and generate some revenue, and really clean it up. It's a good thing for everybody, and I'll just close with that, but I appreciate it.
All right, thanks, everybody. So I think with, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'd take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I'll also talk to, to these guys here.